The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contacting their city alderman, contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call this common council meeting to order at 6:03 if everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a free and justiciable throne.
All right, deputy clerk could please take the roll.
Alderman Sevigny.
Here.
Alderman Perkins is absent. Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Marshall.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isenak.
Here.
All our present exempting Alderman Perkins.
Thank you, deputy clerk. Next we'll move on. We don't have a public hearings, so we'll move on to E, which is reports of department head officers, department head staff and consultants. Is there a motion to either approve all of the minutes and communications? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through G and communications H, I, and J.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Sevigny and seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, seeing none, that passes. Next, we'll move on to item F, which is public comment on any matter or concern to the city. So if you want to step up to the podium and please state your name and address, and I will be holding you to the five-minute limit. All right, seeing no public comment at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. If anyone wishes to vote for it altogether, or we can break it down. Alderman Sevigny.
We'll take these individually. So at this time, I'd like for us to receive the minutes of the common council at 5:20 24.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Sevigny and seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we, excuse me, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it passes. Next, we have administration committee for the official newspaper. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the Post Crescent Media as the City of Manassia's official city newspaper for 2024 through 25 year as recommended by the administration committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it passes. Next, we'll move on to item three, which is a special board of public works. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. At this time, we had a special board of public works meeting on 5:20, and in that meeting, we are recommending that we approve the 50-year capital improvement program and the acceptance of a citywide stormwater quality action plan with review three years from now of a possible increase.
That's in the resume.
That's in the resume. Okay. We don't need the second part.
Okay, so there was a motion, and Alderman Repella, did you second it?
I seconded.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it passes. There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to I, which is action items. Is there a motion for item one? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of May 17 through May 30 in the amount of $1,284,643.42.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Lewis. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, deputy clerk, if we could have a roll call, please. Next, we move on to item two. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the liquor license renewal applications for the 2024 through 2025 licensing period. That's July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, as listed in the clerk's memo dated June 3, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Lewis. Is there any discussion? Alderman Isenak.
I will abstain from voting since I have all the license on this list.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Thank you. Next is item three, outdoor alcoholic beverage renewal permit applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the outdoor alcoholic beverage renewal permit applications for the 2024 through 25 licensing period as listed in the clerk's memo dated June 3, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Sevigny. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, if we could please have a roll call vote. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item four, outdoor street serve permit applications for 2024. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Question for the city attorney before I proceed. There are recommended motions, one and two, should they be taken separately? Is that your recommendation?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, we'll move for the approval of the Jitters Outdoor Alcoholic Beverage Renewal, I'm sorry, we'll move for the approval of the outdoor street serve permit application for the 2024 licensing period for Jitters contingent upon receipt of signed liability agreement pursuant to section 7-8-2G and receipt of input from the fire chief. Staff recommends the approval of the outdoor street serve permit, provided that the standards for 7-8-2 are met, including but not limited to two hours of operation, each person being seated, and minimum width of five feet sidewalk clearance for pedestrian traffic, ADA accessible within the public right-of-way, and B, health and sanitation standards are maintained.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. I've, oh boy, sorry, I'm trying to find that drawing that we had for this establishment. And, oh, okay, sure. Okay, thank you. So, I mean, it's kind of an odd drawing. I'm assuming that basically they're opening up the garage door kind of thing, and then they're going to have the bar stools on the outside. I'll ask for unanimous consent to hear from Sam. Is that the only mic that's working?
Yes.
To the clerk, you, go ahead.
Yes, that's correct. They're putting seating on the street in front of the building in that little window space.
Okay, so basically, I haven't been in there in a long time, so will sense the change either. So is there seating on the inside of that also?
There is.
Okay, that's all I have. And is that within their own property line, or is that within the city easement?
I believe with, I believe with that establishment, it is very close to the property line. The front of the building is very close to property line, so I think that open garage door is basically at the property line, so the stools or the bar chairs would be in the city right-of-way.
So isn't that a violation of our city?
My understanding is that the requirement per code that we have certain departments, including community development and zoning, sign off on this street use for service was that that is allowed through that consent.
I mean, I wrote the ordinance, so I remember that it basically, it had to be on your own property. So that's why I'm asking this, because our property lines are, they're hard to define, especially in the downtown area. And I know, for instance, when we opened it up on the east side over here, some of this, we realized that actually halfway out, even further in the sidewalk, was actually their property and not ours. So that's why it was permitted. That's why I'm asking this question. Where's their property line? If it's in the city easement area, then they're having, and if they're allowed to have a beer or whatever, then they're, they have an open intoxicant. So just for clarification, I mean, I like the, I like the concept and the idea. I certainly went to build this if I knew for sure that where my boundary lines and that were.
Yes, thank you. If I may, I would just point to section 7-8-2, and the intent of this section, outdoor restaurant service, I would note, updated 1/12/2021, is to establish standards for the limited use of public right-of-way and other public property for outdoor restaurant service by those restaurants that are licensed in the historic downtown while maintaining right-of-way and other public property accessibility, safety, and preserving the historic character of the area. So it acknowledges that there might be some public right-of-way use. I believe the drawing shows a four-feet width of their countertop, along with one foot for chair space, and our code requires that there be five feet in length or in width, that is accessible sidewalk area, public right-of-way area for the public. So in terms of protection to the city.
You mean, on the other side, they have to have?
That's right. So we require them to sign a liability agreement. We also require them to provide us liability insurance in that regard for those concerns that you just referred to.
All right, thank you. That helps out a lot.
All right, Alderman Grady.
Thank you, mayor. I don't know if this is a question for the police chief, or if it's, I'll start with the deputy clerk. So it looks like with the tables, you know, Jitters in the back do have it, does have a deck, so the people go out back there. So the front section that Alderman Sevigny was talking about, there's only four people that can go out there and drink?
Yes, that's correct. There's a separate permit for outdoor service, which is what they would apply for, for that back section behind the building. For this front section, it's specifically for street service, so specific to sidewalk use.
Okay.
They intend to only have three or four chairs out there.
Okay, just so the chief is aware of that, to monitor that, so it doesn't become a crowd issue out in front, because there's a busy intersection and corner back there. So I don't, I don't foresee only four people out there come late at night. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, deputy clerk, if we could have a roll, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, and now I believe we need to act on the second recommendation for this, so is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Contingent on receipt of signed liability agreement pursuant to section 7-8-2G and receipt of input from the fire chief. Staff recommends the approval, or sorry, I move for the approval of the outdoor street serve permit for Empreys Brewing LLC, doing business as Empreys Brew Mill and the attic at 198 to 200 Main Street, Manassia, for the 2024 licensing year, provided, A, the standards of 7-8-2 are met, including but not limited to two hours of operation, each person being seated, width of five feet sidewalk clearance for pedestrian traffic, ADA accessible within the public right-of-way, and, B, that the businesses front awning be removed or properly secured, and the current chain and concrete block be removed per section 15-1-4 and 11-7-2, with the caveat that any changes to the exterior of the building may also require Landmarks Commission approval and consideration, and C, health and sanitation standards are maintained.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next, we move on to action item five, application for temporary Class B retailer's license. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for the application of a temporary Class B retailer's license for June of 2024 Brewz on Bagel event. It happens on June 13, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 6, to 8:00 p.m. at, excuse me, at Jefferson Park, sponsored by the Manassia Rotary Foundation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Alderman Grady and seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny.
Brewz on Bagel. I thought this one was out at Barker.
Director Sackett, would you like to say a few words?
Move for unanimous consent.
Yes, potentially future ones will be out at Barker Farm, Parker, and other locations, but with not starting the construction of the social space until after 4th of July, we decided to hold the June 1 at Jefferson Park.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All right, Alderman Grady.
Director Sackett, would the festival be out there with popcorn? They're, they're 0 for 4 last summer, so.
That's a put in question.
That's a pet peeve of mine, but just planted that in your head.
I will get that answer for you. I don't have an answer at this point.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, action item six, which is another temporary Class B retailer's license. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, mayor. This time, I'd like to make the motion for the application of a temporary Class B slash Class B retailer's license for the Celebrate Manassia 150, June 21, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., and June 22, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. till 10:30 p.m., downtown Manassia, Curtis Reed Square/Main Street, the Dole Island Development Council.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Grady and seconded by Alderman Sevigny. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny.
So just so folks understand, the Dole Island Development Council is the one seeking the temporary Class B license then, even though it is put on by the 150 Committee in the City of Manassia.
Thank you for clarifying that for folks. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next is action item seven, another Class B retailer's license. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to accept the application of a temporary Class B retailer's license. Fox City's Experience held June 6, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. June 7, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. till 11:00 p.m. And June 8, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Jefferson Park, Bagel Tracks and Trails.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next is action item, action item eight, carnival permit for Celebrate Manassia. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to approve the carnival permit to Celebrate Manassia 150, June 21, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. till 10:30 p.m. And June 22, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. till 10:30 p.m., downtown Manassia, Curtis Reed Square/Main Street, S&amp;J Enterprise.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Sevigny. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Action item nine, carnival permit for the Fox City's Experience. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. At this time, before I make the motion, I'd just like to thank our 150th Secquententennial Committee for all the work they have done to celebrate Manassia's 150th, all the sponsors and everything that has been done. So to make all these events happen, it's taken quite a team. So at this time, I'd like to make the motion to approve the carnival permit for the Fox City's Experience on June 6, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. June 7, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And June 8, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at Jefferson Park, the S&amp;J Enterprises.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Sevigny. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote.
Motion carries seven zero.
Action item 10 is a development agreement. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. We had a meeting on this. It also is recommended by staff and the administration committee that we recommend approval of the development agreement between the City of Manassia and Sugar Maple Property Development LLC for the residential subdivision development of parcels 7-0015-02, 7-00015-01, 7-00011-06, or 06, and 7-00011-08.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I just want to apologize to Alderman Nichols that this was taken under the administration committee, but it seems like I'm the one that's always got to read the zeros.
So motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Nichols. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, action item 11. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move for the approval of the request to accept and spend additional funding for immunization supplemental four grant.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made.
May I finish the motion?
Yep, I'm sorry.
Grant funding for the immunization supplemental four grant funding award in the amount of $22,000 to be spent no later than June 30, 2025.
I apologize, Alderman Nichols, and that was seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Nichols.
Director Hutter, could you just tell everyone what this grant funding will be used for?
You'll have to hold it closer.
Yeah, like right up here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay, sure, thank you, Alderman Nichols. This is an additional award for our immunization supplemental four grant. We originally received it a few years ago to focus on COVID-19 vaccine clinics. The state had additional funds available to distribute to locals, and so they have done so with the change that the funds can now be used to support administration of other vaccines, so work that we are already doing too. Excuse me, so some of the allowable uses include staff time for clinics, translation of materials, the availability of interpreters at our clinics, as well as storage needs, so like a vaccine refrigerator or freezer, storage for our supplies, and, you know, other things like outreach and communications.
Can it also be used for community outreach to help children get caught up on their childhood immunizations?
Yes, I believe it can.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Action item 12, agreement to construct Elijah D. Smith Manassia Public Library Improvement Project. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Before I make any type of motion, this seems a little too simple of a motion that's listed on the agenda. Are we just doing this first and then later on moving down to the resolution for more additional concept or?
Yes, that would be staff's recommendation.
Okay, so just this simple motion is fair at this point?
It's a suggested one. I'm pretty much willing to.
Okay, thank you, because I was looking for that. So I'll read the recommended motion then, that Alderman Isenak alluded me to, and that is that is recommended that staff and also the council approve a three-party agreement with the friends of the Elijah D. Smith Manassia Public Library and Myron Construction Company Incorporated for the library improvements at the Elijah D. Smith Manassia Public Library.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Isenak. Is there any discussion?
And then the other, yes, if I may.
Yep.
The other part of that comes later on under ordinances and resolutions, and that's our 2324.
All right. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Not sure if my questions are for Director Kapetsky or for the city attorney, or maybe both.
To be perfectly honest, this agreement really caught me off guard. I didn't anticipate this being part of the plan, and neither was it communicated as we were moving through and towards this point. So can it, it can be, can it please be explained for folks listening what this agreement does, what it is and what it does?
Yep, so this agreement, we, we found ourselves in a unique position as we've gone through this process in that if, as you look at other projects, other public projects throughout the states, it's pretty rare to nonexistent where we have the amount of private funding, or the private funding outweighs the municipal funding. In addition, we are working very hard to try to keep the process moving forward at a good pace to stay ahead of inflation, to make sure we can get workers to the site to get work done in a timely manner. So as we have had our discussions and worked through the fundraising process, we were looking for ways that would allow us to move at a decent pace, that would cover all of the legal requirements, and this was the most elegant solution that we could find. And beyond that, I guess I would defer to Attorney Struve.
So the question is, what, what is this agreement and what does it do?
So this three-party agreement essentially formalizes an exception to the public bidding law, and as Director Kapetsky noted, we are in somewhat of a unique position in that the majority of funding for this project is privately donated. In addition, it requires a library, which eventually that authority will belong to the library board in terms of the building itself, but because it is a municipal improvement, a public construction project, we must follow public bidding laws unless an exception exists. The exception is laid out in this agreement. Apart from noting that it formalizes the, the exception, I would note too, along the lines of the unique place that we are in, we have also submitted, or two different companies have submitted proposals to us in terms of a request for proposal for a construction management services agreement, and the constructor in this agreement, the contractor, excuse me, is, you know, that, that awardee. Myron was awarded that agreement. And through the discussions that have occurred since that agreement, since they were approved, awarded, they have agreed and are very interested in moving forward with this procedure as well. They've approved, approved, excuse me, the agreement, as has the Friends Group. In addition, I'm trying to cover all bases. Does that help? Are there any outstanding questions that I've missed?
Well, I think you brought up an interesting issue, and that is exception to the public bidding law. And so why, help, help me understand why these entities, the parties in this agreement who are the Friends of the Elijah D. Smith Manassha Public Library, Myron Construction, and the City of Manassha, why would these entities be so interested in not, in, in creating this exception to the public bidding laws?
And on the one hand, it's the nature of the funding is primarily private donated funds, but on the other hand, it's just the timeline. And there's been the RFP for the Construction Management Services Agreement, and that construction contract had been awarded to Myron, who is the contractor in this agreement. So in that regard, makes sense. But also that agreement will no longer be between the city and Myron. It will now be between the Friends and Myron.
And when, when did, when was that contract approved? Was it April before sign died?
I believe it was.
Or was it in March, February?
It may have been in February, February 5, I believe. There was a special meeting.
Thank you.
Or a special joint meeting.
It says in the memo it was February. Thank you.
I did a lot of reading today.
Okay, so then, why so long? I mean, it's February, that was approved in February, and here we are, the library's getting ready to, I mean, things are being moved, the library's closed, and we're, it sounds like everybody's ready to start construction, and what, what took February, March, April, May, five months?
And I think a lot of the pre-construction agreements have been occurring, you know, in terms of a handshake agreement without a formal agreement, which is common for construction projects. So I think that a lot has occurred that we just have not seen in terms of outward construction. There have been meetings between EUA, which is the Architectural Design Engineering Services, and the city. There is a contract that does exist between them and the city, as well as Myron. You know, those three parties have been meeting in order to come to a plan, a design, I should say, a final design.
Yes, and I'm aware of the contract with EUA as well. There is a clause in here that says the city's contribution to the Friends shall occur no later than the month during which the project is commenced. Would that be June, July?
It would be in June.
Okay. Where, where is the rest of the money?
It is at Community First. The Friends has established an account there. Community First has agreed to, for larger donations, so using the Manassha Corp donation as an example, they're paying it over four years. And what Community First has agreed to do is basically provide all of the money for the project ahead, and that's another, another reason for trying to get everything kind of in one place so we can, again, move forward to pay the bills and get the project done. So Community First will take responsibility for collecting the rest of the pledges for, over the course of the next four years.
Community First will take responsibility for collecting the pledges.
Correct.
However, Friends of the Library Group will be responsible for paying the bills.
Correct.
And then, and then how do we keep track of the taxpayer contribution, the $3 million, now essentially 2.6? How will we be keeping track of how that is spent? And I know that that is addressed in here, but if you could explain that, please.
So the way we're looking to do this is services for the agreement would be handled by, purely by donations, so the city would be paying for hard materials in the project. So those invoices, the people at Myron have agreed to break out those invoices, so it's easy for us to bring them back to the council to see exactly what those material costs are, and you would have approval for each of those expenses.
Okay, and, and thank you for that explanation. That part of this is very important to me, and I think it's important to be transparent with the taxpayers on how their money is being spent. And so I'm going to yield the floor to Alderman Sevenik because I see his light on, but I do have an amendment to offer regarding that after further discussion.
Alderman Sevenik.
I'm just concerned, should we add the amendment under the resolution? Wouldn't it be better under the resolution, any amendments?
If, if the request is to amend the actual agreement as provided, it should be made now.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for yielding, Alderman Nichols. So for the most part, I, in all the years I've been up here, this is the first time I've ever seen a three-party agreement, and I'm not completely happy about it because it's something that Alderman Nichols touched on, and that's transparency. And I understand the uniqueness of a, of a timeline, and we have gone out of our way every step for some time now cooperating with the library board ourselves, and now the new entity here is the Friends of the Manassha, Elijah D. Smith Manassha Library. And I had asked a long time ago, most council members may remember this, but I've asked for a letter of commitment, because the last thing I want to see is a Manassha steam utility situation come up where we fund $3 million and then the funding doesn't come forward. And I've been assured that the funding is coming forward, but as the director indicated, it is going into a unique account at Community First, and I know at least one of the entities is paying over a four-year period of time. And so I'm thinking to myself, wait a minute, if they're paying over a four-year period of time, we're spending $8 million, how is Myron getting paid if the money's not there? So it, would it be that Community First is just gonna, out of the goodness of their heart, they will be funding that until they receive all the resources they need from the donors?
Yes, that's correct. The Community First would, basically their contribution to this project would be to do the funding upfront and then collect the pledges from the donors that have agreed to pledge.
I've been a supporter of this project for, actually, you may not realize it, but it's been going on long before even Brian was here, and I know that Mr. Berkstrom has been a key player in this and has really wanted to see this move forward. And the only thing that makes me feel a little uncomfortable, it seems like when I'm talking about the transparency part of it, is that we're avoiding the public bidding laws here, and I think we're changing the rules so that we don't have to do that. And earlier today, we had a, a session with the body here to understand protocol, and you had mentioned several times a smell test. And because I've never dealt with this, and I've been around here the longest, something didn't feel comfortable with me, and I appreciate the time, Brian, that you gave me on this. So I just wanted the council to know that this is not standard protocol. This is totally new and different, but it accomplishes the goal of having an outstanding award-winning library that will be the envy of the Fox Valley. And as long as I'm assured that the donors are totally committed, then I'm comfortable with, that we do this, but we do have a few amendments that Alderman Nichols would like to provide. Because you're a unique character, I will ask for unanimous consent to hear from Mr. Berkstrom, which is very rare for any of us to do.
I don't know, whatever you want me to do.
Mayor, is that all right?
I will make this one-time exception, so yes, please, Mr. Berkstrom.
Go ahead.
I have guaranteed the $6 million in gifts.
Okay. Thank you. That's good enough for me. So we have you, by the way, we record our meetings. So with that, I appreciate it, Alderman Nichols, that you yield to me, and I know that you have some amendments.
All right, Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I actually have a comment, a question, and then my amendment. In, this question is for Director Sassman. It was stated that the city's $3 million will be made in, paid in June, and so how will those funds be paid, from the general fund, and then how will that be covered?
Yep, from our cash reserves, excuse me. This amount will be part of our borrowing package that's going to be brought forward at the next council meeting, the June 17 meeting, borrowing for our 2023 projects, and this $3 million will be included with that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Attorney Struve, there is a clause, Section 3.2, that this, the Friends shall be responsible for any additional funds that may be required to complete the project after consultations with the city. So I think this somewhat addresses Alderman Sevenik's question about what if more funds are needed, and can you help me understand the after consultations with the city part of that?
I think it's, I think it's just as it's stated, after consultations with the city. If there are additional funds that might be required to complete the project, there should be a consultation with the city to let the city know that there is this additional funding necessary, even if the city would not be responsible for those funds. I think that in all transparency, the city should be in the know and should have a say in those funds.
Okay. As Alderman Sevenik stated, this is new territory. I have never seen anything like this as well in my tenure here on the city council, and transparency is one of my concerns with this agreement, and so making sure that the city's funds, which are ultimately taxpayers' dollars, are, are accounted for and spent on materials associated with the project is important. And so I have an amendment to Section 3.3 of this agreement, and I'll give you a second to find it. I think it's on page 196. Section 3.3, and I did talk about this with the city attorney today, and we crafted this amendment together. And so you'll see the last sentence in that section talks about approved payments will be made in the month following the month the invoice was received. And in order to provide accountability and transparency for that remaining $2.6 in city funds, I'm proposing the amendment to change that particular sentence to read, "Payments using city funds will be approved by the Board of Public Works and Common Council and made in the month following the month the invoice was received."
Did you get that there before? Okay, motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Sevenik.
I can, I can read it again if you wish, just so everyone has it. And I did, we did include the deputy clerk in our email as well, so. It would read, "Payments using city funds will be approved by the Board of Public Works and Common Council and made in the month following the month the invoice was received."
Is there any discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing none, whenever you have that all set, we could take a roll call. Alderman Nichols. It's, it's not going to let me because it's voting.
And you want to be sure what we're voting on. It seems my vote recorded because we're voting on the amendment, but not the agreement.
Yes, project as amended.
Yeah, let's see.
I know, but the project as amended would be the final vote.
I see. All right.
All right, so this will be voting on the amendment when we get it ready. All right, so this will be voting on the amendment when we get it ready. One second, please. All right, now the updated amendment is up for a vote.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, so the amendment passes. So is there any further discussion on this item? Alderman Nichols?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I did not have further discussion.
Is there any further discussion on Action Item 12? As amended? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote on Action Item 12 as amended, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Next, we do not have any held over business. We'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Is there a motion for the first resolution? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve Resolution 21-24, a resolution authorizing the borrowing from WPPI Energy for the solar project.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, the second ordinance, is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve Resolution 24-24. This resolution authorizes the borrowing from WPPI Energy, introduced by myself, and I believe this is at a 0% interest.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, we have our third resolution. Is there a motion? All right, Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll save the day. I'll make a motion to, make a motion for R. 2224, a resolution pertaining to the equivalent runoff unit, the ERU, charges for stormwater utility introduced by Mayor Hammett.
Is there a second? All right, thank you. The motion was made by Alderman Repella, seconded by Alderman Grati. Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella?
No.
Oh, all right, Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. I'm going to be voting against this. I think it's too much too soon, and I think it should have been spread out over a longer period of time. We are behind, but I think it's too much at one time for those of us who have to pay this fee. So just kind of out of a small protest, I am going to vote against it.
Seeing other discussion, Director Youngworth, do you want to go into it all, the precedence for the increase and maybe just previous establishment for revisiting?
Certainly. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Can you hear me okay? No, it's not picking up the greatest here. So we did present at the last Board of Public Works meeting a 50-year citywide stormwater quality management action plan. And then in assessing our current utility rates along with trying to implement that plan to meet DNR standards and to comply with our municipal permit with the DNR, we have proposed increasing by 10%. The last increase we had was in 2020 for the start of 2021. And it was proposed to increase 10% in three years' time. So we have been staying pretty on track. We're stretching out the length of the implementation for the action plan, enough that we're able to stay within what we were projecting back in 2020. So we're just following through, after, of course, updating the numbers, with what we had intended at that time. So we are proposing to go from a, I believe it's $114 to $125.40 for this current increase. The average for the other communities surrounding us is $135, so we are still under the average within the Fox Valley area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. So even though she has indicated the average, but Derek Nina is much less than us. Buchanan is way below us. Grand Shoot is below us. It just, when you use numbers and averages, it can be deceiving because Oshkosh, but of course, Oshkosh was dealing with flooding issues. Theirs is almost double. So it's $237. So my, my thing is, is that I think instead of doing things every five or 10 years, that we should tighten that up a little bit so it's not such a burden. You know, right now inflation is pretty tough on a lot of people. And getting, we're just getting hit from every end. And it's just gotten to the point where a lot of it, in my personal opinion, is greed. And because of that, everybody, it affects the, it's like a domino falling, and then the next one falls, and then all of a sudden, we have high inflation. So this is just my way of saying we could, and I'm not blaming anyone here, obviously you know that. I just think it should have been spread out, and we should do that in the future. Because part of this motion before was that we look at an increase, was it three years from now?
That's correct.
And see, I feel better about that.
And we can reassess in less time. I mean, that is certainly something we can consider, spreading that out more.
But five and 10 years is just out of line. So I'm not going to let, I'm going to stop this domino by my little vote.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries six one.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our fourth resolution. Is there a motion? Yep, and then one second for, here we go. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move for the approval of R. 1224, a resolution authorizing Winnebago County funds allocated for the purchase of Meridian barricades in the amount of $184,021.84.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Grati. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Chief Thorne, would you like to explain what these are and what they'll be used for?
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. So in 2023, the police department had submitted a request to the Winnebago County ARPA Strategy and Outcomes Commission for a grant to purchase Meridian mobile traffic barricades. And these are the barricades that we actually had on display during, I think it was hometown Halloween. These barricades are fantastic for added safety and security features for our community, specifically for some of our downtown events. They're reusable, lifetime-warranted. And they allow us the ability to be able to maneuver them into really close positions for better security overall for our crowds. Ultimately, after our submission to the ARPA Strategy and Outcomes Commission, it was approved unanimously and went to the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors, or Supervisory Board. It was subsequently approved there as well. And therefore, with your approval, we would be looking at purchasing 19 of these barricades and some miscellaneous equipment. The lead time is about 60 days. So it is a little bit out from the point where we would actually receive them. But we're hoping that by receiving them, we'll be able to implement them by some of our bigger events that we have this year yet.
Thank you for that. And these were Winnebago County Spirit Fund dollars. I just want to thank Chief Thorne for coming and attending a Winnebago County Board meeting. This was not an easy passage by the Winnebago County Board. It took two times. And I had the opportunity to see Chief Thorne use the police department's lead practices. And it made a difference in each of the public meetings and ultimately helped lead to the county board passing this particular item. I think you mentioned in your memo that since many communities around us are also acquiring these, that there's the ability to share between communities as well?
Correct. So my understanding is Nina has, the city of Nina currently has upwards of between 60 and 90 of these barricades, and city of Oshkosh has them as well. So universally, we will be able to share them in the event that they're needed.
Great. Thank you for that. And I'm going to digress just a second. This particular item, the barricades, along with the solar array that we just talked about, we were awarded funds for fire, for fire rescue radios from the Spirit Fund and for the fire rescue training facility. So I'm just going to take a little credit for that because all of that happened during my time on the county board. And while I didn't make that happen solely myself, I was a part of that, bringing a lot of money back to the city of Manassia. Thank you.
All right, Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. I was going to mention some of those Spirit Funds because being on the, at the time, chairing the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue, we received the Spirit Funds, and that was very helpful. As I've requested in the past, I asked that we direct a letter, and that, again, this is for the deputy clerk, that we all sign and thank the county board for these funds. You know, sometimes we don't do enough of that. I feel that, you know, this is quite a bit of money. And I actually think it's quite expensive, but I guess the bigger cost really is the, you know, we have the trailer and that. I have a tough question, though. Where are we storing these? What is planned? Is it going into cold storage at the city garage?
Great question. So currently, yes, it would either go into cold storage at city garage or it would be housed in the cold storage on the police department portion of the cold storage building.
And before I forget, I want to, and you guys won't believe I'm going to say this, but I want to give a compliment to former Alderman Taylor. When he had any of his festivals before this even became an issue, he worked it always, he had this premonition of something like that. What community was that that happened? In Jamesville, right? Waukesha? Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, Waukesha. And he would have us put either plows out or, you know, the one thing we don't want to start doing is putting out a fire truck because we know the last one we just purchased is $2.5 million. So that's not, not a good way to, you know, have a barrier. So I saw them out here. I just think it's expensive, you know? And I was thinking 19 seems a lot, but then you're mentioning Nina has how many?
So Nina currently has between 60 and 90 of them.
Wow.
I believe they just acquired a few more as well.
And then unfortunately, we won't have these by the 150th? No, that was my, kind of my hope. So give them a call. I'll tell them if they want their money that they have to be delivered within 48 hours.
We, so we will not have our specific barricades, but we have made a request to the company to bring in additional barricades to be used for that event.
Oh, excellent. So I don't know if people heard you or not, but say that again.
So, so our specific barricades, ones that we are having manufactured for the city, will not be here by the 150th. However, we have made a request to this company, and they're, they have generously agreed to bring in barricades for our event.
Excellent. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
I just would like to also add one last thing. Thank you for your support through the county. Much appreciated.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next, we have Item 5, Resolution R-23-24. Is there a motion? Alderman Grati?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for R. 2324, to accept the donations and approving the agreement with the Friends of the Liza D. Smith Manassia Public Library Incorporated, slash Myron Construction, for the construction of the library improvement project of the Elijah D. Smith Manassia Public Library, $8 million total project, $3 million city contributions, which includes $245,000 to EUA for architectural engineering design services, and $90,000 to UWO Fox Cities for library temporary relocation costs, and the $5 million private donations introduced by Alderman Ted Grati.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Grati, seconded by Alderman Eisenach. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I have an amendment to offer, and I'm doing this after consultation with the city attorney as well today. And it has to do with the final, be it further resolved, so the last paragraph in, the last paragraph of the resolution. The common council, at least in my time on, at least in my time here, has always been part of these projects. The common council has always, has supported this project. The Common Council has always, has supported this project from the beginning and agreed to contribute $3 million toward the project as well. And I firmly believe that it is important for the Common Council to be part of that acceptance of that gift back from the Friends of the Library. And so having said that, I'm proposing an amendment that the final paragraph would read as follows, and I did submit this to the clerk's office today as well, in coordination with the city attorney. Be it further resolved that upon completion of the library project in substantial conformity with the approved plans and specifications and final design, the completed project will be brought back before the Common Council for acceptance on behalf of the City of Manassha.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Sevanik. Is there any discussion on this, excuse me, amendment? Did you? All right. I want then, one second, if we could have a roll call vote, please, on the amendment.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, so the amendment passes. So is there any further discussion on this resolution as amended? All right, seeing none, if we could have a roll call, please, on the resolution as amended.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, so we worked through K, ordinances and resolutions. So next, it's L, appointments. Is there a motion for mayor's appointments? Alderman Sevanik?
If it's okay with you, I will do the ones that are, that end in 2027 first, and then we'll do the one that ends in 2026, and then the one, wait, no, because that last one starts on 7/1. I guess let's do it the way we did it before.
Let me read.
You read them all off, and then, so at this point, Mayor, approve, I'll make a motion to approve your appointments as listed on the agenda, and you can read them.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second.
All right. So the first one, mayor's reappointment of Debbie Galiazi to the Board of Appeals for the term effective June 3, 2024, to January 31, 2027. Mayor's reappointment of Mary Vanderweis to the Board of Appeals for the term effective June 3, 2024, to January 31, 2026. Mayor's reappointment of Morgan Ray Othrow to the Board of Appeals for the term effective of June 3, 2024, January 31, 2027. Mayor's reappointment to Linda Stoll to the Sustainability Board for the term effective of June 3, 2024, through May 1, 2027. Mayor's reappointment of Debbie Galiazi to the Board of Review for the term effective of June 3, 2024, through July 1, 2027. And then the last one, mayor's reappointment of Tom Stoffel to the Board of Review for the term effective of July 1, 2024, to July 1 of 2027. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it passes. M, claims against the city, there are none. And then N, public comment on any matter listed on this agenda for five minutes. Has anyone from the gallery wished to speak? All right, seeing none. O, items for next meeting agenda by a majority vote. Is there anything? All right, so next, we move on to adjournment. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All right. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. All right, we adjourned at 7/17. Thank you all.
The City of Manassha is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manasshawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.